Would you like to call the meeting to order? Mr. Frank?
Hi, how is everyone today?
Good.
Is this a stand-up bit or something?
No, you're not gonna stand? Oh, come on. Okay. Everyone else needs to stand though, so we can say the pledge of allegiance. Hand over heart. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no division, has a law. Alright, if someone would've said shy for you, I'd say absolutely not. So Tempe is a sixth grader, but has greater perseverance and persistence than many of the adults. Tempe has cerebral palsy along with some other health conditions that hinder her movement in school. And while some people would just say, "Just push me around in a wheelchair," Tempe says, "I got this. Let me do it." Let me give you an example. So earlier this year, the elevator was broken. Do you remember that day? Okay. We gave Tempe some options on how to get her around in classes. The easy choice would've been just to go to Flyers workspace, go to a few of her exploratory areas, and just skip the second floor main classes, right? Is that what you decided to do?
No.
No. Instead, she decided she's going to walk up those stairs. And she did so. And she was tired by the time she got to the top, but you did it, didn't you?
Actually, no.
Is that when Mrs. Strike compared you?
No.
Oh, you were tired. I wouldn't. Alright. She made it all the way up there. She went to all of her classes. She didn't let that elevator or anything else stand in her way. Another example, a few weeks back, I was actually in PE class. Do you remember that? Actually, I was in two of your two PE, two of your PE classes. And they were doing, is it capture the pig or capture the frog?
Capture the pig.
Capture the pig, right? So this is a game that's kind of a cross between capture the flag and dodgeball. Okay, so you have to try and get from one side of the gym to the other, grab the pig that's essentially in a hula hoop.
And then get it, and then get it back to the big table.
Yeah, and bring it back to the other side without getting hit by a ball. Now, I remember Mrs. Dubish said, you know, "Tempe, do you want to just walk around the gym or whatever else?" And what did you say? "No, I want to play," right? And you did, and you kept going back and forth, and I know you successfully stole at least one pig and got it all the way back. And I will say, you know, as much as I think the other kids are nice to you, they also don't cut you any slack, right? I mean, they were throwing the balls at you, and you were dodging them, and you were throwing them right back, right? So, and this is kind of what I mean. The perseverance is just absolutely amazing. Ms. Hoffman said, "Tempe is the kid that you look at in the hallway and can't help but smile. She is positive, outgoing, and kind to everyone that she interacts with. Tempe is a dedicated student who puts the extra work to be successful academically. I am very proud of her perseverance," here it again, it was not just me, "and drive to be the best version of herself." Mrs. Winicky said, "Tempe is a kind student. She is always looking for ways to brighten someone's day with a note, or a drawing, or even a little gift. Despite the challenges she faces, she always has a smile on her face and a positive outlook." And Mrs. Kubik, this is the last teacher that's embarrassing you today. "Tempe is one of the most hard-working students that I've ever had. She does not let obstacles impede her from completing any task. You should've seen her flying through her heart maze, hopscotching through her respiratory system, and braving the digestive gauntlet. She is conscientious, she is friendly to everyone, she is consistently happy, and she always does the right thing." She actually highlighted and bolded and underlined that one. She is a model student. So bottom line is, Tempe is determined and a strong individual who is incredibly independent, especially for a sixth grader. I have a sixth grader at home, and she's nowhere near as independent as you are. Don't tell her I said that. And even if things don't go our way, or if Tempe's having a bad day, you know, some people just kind of kiss that day goodbye and say, "Maybe tomorrow?" Not Tempe. She will turn it around within a few minutes and make the rest of the day great, even when she starts, when it starts off maybe not so good. So Tempe, you are awesome. Thank you for being you. Thank you, Mom, because you've raised a tremendous young lady here. Congratulations.
There you go, honey. Congratulations. Good job.
Do you want to give a speech now?
Did I forget to tell her that? Alright, so I'm up for round two. Mr. McGregor is one of our sixth grade math teachers. And although many may say that he looks like a supervillain, he's actually a super teacher. Watching Mr. McGregor teach can brighten anyone's day. He makes math fun and exciting, and weren't you just telling me that on the car ride over? Who's your favorite teacher? She hated math until she had you. You turned it around. He meets students where they are, but pushes them to where he wants them to be or where they want to be. Like Tempe, Mr. McGregor is persistent, and he bestows that trait onto his students, pushing them to not give up and to use their strategies to solve difficult problems. Outside the classroom, Mr. McGregor has a positive energy that goes unmatched. He runs two of our more popular clubs with Mr. Striker, wrestling. I wouldn't have thought I'd see thirty-five, forty students going and wrestling after school for a club. And then board game club. Not foam club, not PS2 or whatever it is, it's PS3, but board games. And they are so excited to play board games, which is hard. He's also a member of our PVAS team, which is very fitting, and is often the first to volunteer for activities or some embarrassing event like getting pied or dunked, which we were talking about today too. Yeah, that was cold last year for sure. Your neighbor, Ms. Hoffman, said, "Jordan is the type of teacher you hope that your child has one day. He is energetic and engaging, which motivates students to thrive. As a coworker, he is supportive and makes the workplace a happier one to be in. I am very lucky to call him my friend." And just down the hall a little bit, Mrs. Kubik. "In a time of constant change in apathy in education and work ethic, Jordan is a refreshing constant. He never misses a day." I don't know if "never" is the right word. He never misses a day.
I missed one in two years. So I'll tell you that.
I still think you're the only one in the building that hasn't got COVID yet, right?
I am one of two people. Knock on wood.
He's never in a bad mood. I mean, this smile is with him all the time. He never complains, hardworking, always offering to do the extra work. And again, the "always" with the underline bold. Eats peanut butter for lunch, a fried egg for breakfast, and chicken for dinner.
Never changes.
Never changes. And that's why you look the way you do. Mr. McGregor, you've been an asset to our math department, our sixth grade team, but more importantly, to our students. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
I've reached a point where I'm dating tonight.
That's why I wanted to go first.
Alright, well, come on up, sir. I also wore a tie. Good job. Please introduce William McGrays as an Honored Student of March. In our school, William is an academic leader. He was just recently informed that he's a Class of 2023 Valley Val. During his time here in Maryvale, Will has taken up almost every AP and new step course that was offered and is excelling all of them. He has maintained honor and high honor roles throughout high school. Additionally, Will has received Students of the Month accolades on several occasions. Our academics is only beginning to truly understand and appreciate the impact Will has on our school. Will is a member of NHS. He plays saxophone, he's participated in tech wars, he's played several sports here in Maryvale, including swimming, golfing, and this year decided his senior year to join the football team. That's why he fits in. When asked by Mrs. Ford why he chose to play football for the first time in his senior year, he told her that he wanted to give it a chance before he graduated. Willingness to try new things is a great character trait in this young man. Additionally, outside of class, he has participated in church soup drives and taught swim lessons for the town. I have a few teachers who wanted to try him as well, and once I told them he was a student of March. Mr. Norris says, "Having taught Will at A-Cush and coached him in swimming this year, I can say he is the ideal student and athlete. He is incredibly hardworking and a leader inside and outside the classroom. He always goes above and beyond. When it's asked of him, he truly deserves this honor." Mr. Hanson says, "Will has this unique ability to avoid intelligence with common sense approach to problem solving." Very poor quality there. His problem-solving ability will undoubtedly prove to be a key to his success going forward." Mrs. Renicki said that she had you pretend in a seventh grade English, and Will always came to class with a smile on his face. He was kind, polite, and respectful towards everyone. Will went above and beyond when completing assignments. He also demonstrated fantastic skills writer and was a valued contributing member to our group activities. It was a pleasure to have Will for two years, and I'm certain he has a very bright future. Will exemplifies what it means to be a Flyer. We are very proud of his accomplishments and appreciative of all of his efforts to try and make our school and our community a better place. Please join me in congratulating Will Grays for all of his accomplishments here in Maryvale.
Where are you going to college? Did you decide?
I'm thinking U B.
Oh, good choice. There you go.
I'm just bored. Come on up.
I'm gonna follow.
So tonight, we recognize Laura Ford for her dedication, professionalism, and passion that she brings every day in Maryvale High School. Now, I just want to point out, I made her stand up actually. We have had the privilege of working with Mrs. Ford in the past, I have had the privilege of working with Mrs. Ford in the past three years. She is a dedicated, pleasant professional who quietly, in her own little way, makes a difference in our students' lives every day. When Sam learned that Laura was younger, night they had a following to say, "Barbara, I got millions," and I told her to be open. Mr. Hanson says, "Laura blends a mix of compassion and advocacy like P. Lino. She has the unique ability to know when and how to approach any number of sensitive issues." Couldn't agree more. Mrs. Cook Fair says, "Laura is patient, kind, and very supportive of all of our students and staff. She is always willing to offer support in the midst of notice and give her full attention. Laura really helps students see their strengths and their future potential." Mrs. Deluie, I'm so glad that Laura's receiving this award tonight because of the Board of Education meeting. Laura has spent the school days, spends her school days, tires, hours being out and beyond, working to make sure that our students are safe and emotionally secure. Her office door is open to both students and staff to stop in for chat. Laura has sat with students to choose their schedules for the following school years and discuss their college aspirations. She has listened to all of us with our understanding and compassion, and for what we truly, we are very truly grateful. March is the perfect time to celebrate Laura, Mrs. Deluie, because we are quote-unquote lucky to have her working in our district. Mrs. Swift says, "What a great honor for Laura. She's compassionate, she's very flexible in her role in Maryvale. She's going both to the primary and the high school, sometimes working part-time, two part-time jobs, but working two full-time jobs, she'll say. She's blessed to work as a great counselor and student, and students are very fortunate to have her in their corner." And lastly, Mrs. Squire says, "I've had the pleasure of working with Laura for twenty-four years. She is an outstanding coworker who consistently advocates for the best interests of her students. She has helped organize many college career events over the past years for our students to navigate the post-high school plans. Laura collaborates weekly with faculty and staff to provide academic, social, and emotional support to students. She is a dedicated school counselor who truly deserves this honor." On behalf of the students and staff here at the high school, we would like to thank Mrs. Ford for her compassion, her enthusiasm, her utmost professionalism that she brings every day in Maryvale. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Ford for all that she does for our students.
Are you coming back to our meeting tomorrow? You coming back tomorrow to work with me?
Whatever.
Some time in our last conference, reviewing the expense side of the budget, where that money is going to go, services, programs, staff, things we need to support. In total, we talked about a budget for next year at fifty-five million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand. Tonight, I've got a one-page slide basically walking through that middle column, highlighting some of the changes on revenues that are supporting our expenses. As you know, a big portion of our budget is covered in the local tax levy. And I'm happy to say, we are moving forward with a budget that is tax cap compliant. The increase in the tax levy is just shy of three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. It's a one-point-five-five percent increase over the current year. Looking further down the list, there's just a big number where you see two million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars being available for sales tax. Our sales tax revenue is holding its own, so we're moving forward with maintaining that at that same level for next year. Additionally, we get into these next categories where there's, we have some changes that are, I'll just talk about them. We have a day school tuition line that's down from ten thousand to zero. This is where we would charge other school districts where we would potentially have a student placed in foster care living in our district, attending here, but their parents would have been from Amherst. Then I would bill back Amherst because we're educating their child. We do not have anybody currently, so we're going to reduce that to zero. If a student moves in that is foster care attending here, of course, we'll receive that money and bill for it accordingly. Interest and earnings on investments. I think I skipped one. There's services provided for BOSEs. This one here is part of the cost for them renting our spaces. They rent some space at our primary school, our middle school, the binner building. They cover the door monitor at the building for us. And those revenues are split between two lines. This one called services provided for BOSEs is technically down just under seven thousand dollars because we are taking two spaces back from them that we need for our own use at the middle school. The next line is interest earnings. And that, you know, we're looking at increasing that by just over eighteen thousand dollars. And that's something that we hope and trust can be sustained moving forward as interest rates have kind of turned around. The next two lines are rental of real property to individuals and rental of real property to BOSEs. One is up fourteen thousand dollars, one is down fourteen thousand dollars. But they almost wash. Renting real property to individuals is where we rent our pool, our gyms, our auditorium. It's down because next year we'll be under construction, and we will not have gym space to rent out to individuals. So it's kind of an expected dip, if you will, that we, the trust will balance back up after the construction project's completed. And then the rental of real property to BOSEs is actually showing an increase even though we're renting less rooms because the spaces that they are renting have an inflationary factor built in. Depends on which component, but between two and a half and three percent. So that increase in percentage is offsetting the decrease from the loss of those two classrooms. Then, as we go down, so big BOSEs rent is basically break even. The next big section on here is really the chunk for state aid. And this year, I've been waiting for this number to change since we've first seen it, but foundation aid is our primary state aid category. And as you know, we've talked for years about wanting the state to follow the formula. We haven't done it, we haven't run the formula for years, and we've been basically paying that price because we were losing revenue each and every year. We got a portion of that formula for the current year. And looking ahead to twenty-three, twenty-four, next school year, we're looking at an increase of four-point-one million dollars in our foundation aid. And that is significant in helping to really sustain programs, move our district forward, and I think just really help us beat that place and have the state cover what they really should be moving forward. So they haven't changed that yet, you know? Normally, the governor's number is the lowest number, and then throughout the budget process, you can expect maybe a little bit more than that. Given that this is such a significant increase for us, there are districts that aren't getting an increase. They're getting maybe just a flat two, three percent. But we're not really expecting the Senate and Assembly to negotiate a higher foundation aid before us. Building aid is down one-point-four million dollars, but that's because our building expense, those interest and principal interest payments are down one-point-four million dollars. So they wash. The next few are expense-based aids. So the more you spend, the more money you get. So we're getting more money for building aid, or, excuse me, for transportation aid, excess cost aid, BOSEs aid. You know, transportation costs are up, so we're getting more aid. Excess cost and BOSEs aid, you know, excess costs are for students who are placed at BOSEs, for special ed placements at BOSEs. That actually drives excess cost aid, not BOSEs aid. And if we have students that are placed at Aspire, OLV, Baker Victory, well, Baker Victory, Canale Shion Center, we get offsetting state aid. That is called excess cost. And so those increased expenses are actually generating two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand more revenue. BOSEs aid is up sixty-two thousand. Below that first subtotal line is use of fund balance. And as you know, for quite a while, we've tried to maintain fund balance, to utilize it as needed moving forward. That top line is tax reduction reserve, and that is where we have sold two properties, Aspire, North Hill Building, and seven-seven-seven Maryvale. Once you sell the building, you have ten years to give it back. This is the tenth year of our last sale. So we are using the last of the one reserve. It's just under forty-nine thousand dollars currently. And then that reserve is eliminated and not available for next year. We anticipate and will be maintaining the use of fund balance for the two retirement reserves and for our workers' comp reserve. And then lastly, with the changes you're seeing here, we are showing a decrease, use of appropriated fund balance by just under seven hundred thousand dollars. And we're really showing a decrease in our dependency on fund balance. So as we are looking to move forward, we're going to be able to extend the use of our funds on hand because we're using less of it every year. So that is a real positive thing, not to be drawing down one-point-two million dollars every year of fund balance. You're going to drain it that much quicker. So looking ahead, being in a position where we're looking to utilize under six-hundred, just under six-hundred thousand dollars, that means we'll be able to sustain the use of fund balance longer and be able to help accommodate fluctuations, you know, maybe some spikes or changes in other expenses. We'll be able to utilize that without having to increase a number that is already one-point-two, which is kind of the number, you don't really want to go north of that because you're going to drain it that much quicker. And once that money's gone, it is gone. So overall, you can see the changes that cover our current expense that we've reviewed. The highlights are a large increase in state aid, which we have pushed and pushed for years, and it is kind of nice to see that come around, we hope and trust. All discussions have been that that will be sustained. It shouldn't be a one-time issue. But we deal with those changes, you know, if that, if that changes, you know, we'll deal with that at the time. But things are looking good for us, and we are again able to move forward with a tax cap compliant budget with that increase at one-point-five-five. Part of this revenue presentation, we kind of also consider it our foundation aid public comment. It's a required portion of the increase in foundation aid. They want to make sure it's presented, that there's conversation with the community, how we're utilizing that money and maintaining our programs. We have talked about things we are looking to add and include in our budget with the outreach.
Family support.
Family Support Center. Some additional staff, like we're needing at that sixth grade level, we've talked about adding there.
Bolstering the honors program.
Bolstering the honors program. We have increases to some, some sports, the athletics. There's our music, the musical. There's quite a few things we're trying to do, but also keep in mind that we've got to look ahead to the next year and the following, and there's always annual increases and changes that occur. And there's still some uncertainty as you're looking at inflation in the economy. So we're trying to balance all of that and make a long-term solution for our district that's worked. And I think we're able to get that done with, you know, what we're seeing today for our budget. With that said, we don't usually open it up for public comment, but I would also, if the board has questions or comment, or even the public, I would open that up.
Just a question, you had mentioned that not every school is getting same rate of foundation aid. What drives our foundation aid? Like, what determines, is that we can see from the school that drives our foundation, or?
It's based on student counts, it's based on poverty level, it's, there's formulas to that, and.
It's all formulas. So that's just the difference between the school districts too?
Pretty much. Yes, and they got to one point several years ago where, instead of allowing the formula to run, they just said, "We're not going to run the formula. You're going to get X percent more than what you got the year before." And for districts that were expected to get larger increases, they gave up foundation. They were losing foundation aid because it was capped. But there are other districts whose formula was working the other direction, and those districts were safe by that hold harmless. So now that they're back to letting the formula run, we are a district that we have been harmed because we would have gotten more foundation aid. But those districts that would have lost foundation aid and sustained that higher level, they're seeing maybe a two or three percent increase to their foundation aid instead of, our number's much more significant than that.
And you think of, like, they're using demographic information that's twenty years old in this formula. So if they update the formula and continue to run it, we'll be even better off.
And one thing that, like, in my business official group that we're aware of and having real conversation is some of this depends on the paperwork for free and reduced-price lunches. So we're a CEP school. So because we're CEP, we're not requiring our community, our parents, our staff, who are eligible for free or reduced-price meals through that criteria, to fill out the application because all students are going to get it. I don't need that paperwork. But when you're looking at some of the formula that drive foundation aid, it's dependent on what we can document either with applications and those things to prove, hey, that number, we need this foundation aid. And that will be our challenge as we're following the formula. We're going to want to make sure that we're monitoring that component to make sure we can continue to prove that our, our levels, our, our status, if you will, is, is in the appropriate level so that we're not inadvertently thought of as being wealthier than our community is. So we really have to focus on that as a district to make sure we don't end up harmed down the road. And with the hold harmless, we haven't really had to worry about that too much because we've been at hold harmless level. But now that they're going to let the formula run, that is something we need to be aware of. So.
Any other questions?
You're opening it up to?
I am. Yes, sir.
On the other side of this, the tax parents, the seniors. This is one I'm scared of. Alright, it's one-point-five-five this year. All right, it's one point five five this year, whatever it was last year. We got reassessed two years in a row. My school taxes went up after the, after the two years, my taxes went up because of the reassessment, almost doubled. Yeah, I do have both of those, you know, senior things.
The assessment.
Yes, right. But the idea is it's still, it still went up, doubled, okay? Our social security didn't double. We're on fixed income. The thing I'm concerned about, and again, I'm in the school. I see the needs of the school. I see the needs of the students in that. However, what money tree we getting this out of? It's always the taxpayer. It's always the homeowner, okay? And we're getting hit by, we're getting hit by the town. We're getting hit by the county. And again, one point five five with the school budget, where does it end and where do these people go? They're, they can't afford it anymore. I see people, my neighbor, all right, actually the little grace, next door neighbor. She moved to, her son took her away, took her to California because he lived with her because they can't afford it anymore. Where does it end? And this is the thing that's scary because if you check and see how many seniors we have in this, in this, in this district, it's high. And we're all on fixed income, okay? So I understand where you're coming from. You've got to understand where we're coming from, all right? As far as us saying, okay, that's all right, one point five five, it's under the cap. But where does it end, okay? What's the state doing for us? Okay, on TV, it was saying about the school lunches, the state should be taking that over. We're still paying for that, aren't we? Are we paying for school lunches?
No, and school lunches are totally separate. They're not part of the general fund budget. That's kind of another, that's recorded in our school lunch fund. It's a separate set of accounting books we're required to.
Okay, because they made a big thing with the governor's new budget, everybody's going to get fed and everything. Okay, great. Again, where's that come, what money tree are we picking this on? And again, I love the school. I see what the district done. Look what we've got here. But on the other hand, how about the homeowner? How about the one that's just making it? You go in the grocery store, look at, look how much things went up. It's crazy. So I appreciate what you do. I know you're trying to keep it as low as possible. But also understand in the back of your mind, we're paying for it. And you know what? It's hurting. It's hurting a lot of people. Not only this, not only Mary Dale, but all over, let's face it. And this is one of, this is the better school district. But the idea is it's hurting people because they can't come up with another, a hundred, let's see, one point five five. I was never good at math. I'm glad he's not here. But I think that's like another hundred and some dollars plus what I'm paying now. Okay, so mine was nineteen hundred dollars last year. It used to be ninety. But because of the assessments, we're getting hit, we're getting hit all over. We're getting hit everywhere around. Now where does it end? And I'll say the same thing to the town board tomorrow. Tell him he's ready for it tomorrow. Same thing. Where does it end? We can't continue this rule because you're going to bankrupt the people. They just can't do it anymore. They can't, they can't afford it.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I guess on the next part. This includes purchase orders, so I do want to clarify that we did add two purchase orders to the agenda that exceed the seventy-five hundred. They are for security issues. It's federal stimulus dollars that were budgeted for this purpose. But those quotes and details came in Friday. So we want to kind of get the jump on it and get these items ordered so that we can get those doors secured and improved. So there is a change from one P O now to three for that item. Objection. And I would recommend that the board approve the financial non-personnel consent agenda items one through four as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have one add actually for the personnel consent agenda items should be part of your placement tonight. But we actually have a replacement payroll clerk that we've been able to finalize this morning. And so with your permission, I would like to add that appointment. So during our current payroll clerks last week, we can initiate as much cross-training and get that rolling sooner than later. Is there objection or thoughts, comments there?
Does anyone have an issue?
With that said, I would recommend that the board approve the personnel consent agenda items one through six as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend the board approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd recommend the board approve the appointment of election inspectors as presented.
I'll save myself.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to recommend the board approve the dual labs settlement as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, yes.
To recommend the board approve the BOSEs IPA as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to recommend the board approve the disposition of the surplus equipment as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, yes.
To recommend the board approve the employment agreement for the secretary to the support tank as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, yes.
I'd like to recommend the board, that the board approve the employment agreement for the principal account clerk as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to recommend the board approve the second reading of the policy updates as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, some student liaison updates?
Mr. Jack, future for the legal.
So, two weeks ago? Yeah. Two weeks ago, we had our Say Something Week, which was about like saying something so people like knew that we were out there for them or some people like learn more about like mental health and all that. We, our NAP program cut out Thousand Hearts and ran on Thousand Hearts. And over in the middle school here, four of us came over and printed or taped all Thousand Hearts on the lockers over here in the middle school. And when all the students came out, they all like were surprised and they all had a good, they didn't have a bad rap on it. They all had a good rap on it. We also put up quote cards in our bathrooms in the high school. And we had, one student came to one of our NAP students and said, I walked in the bathroom and I saw it. And she just started crying because she like needed it that day. So whatever that quote said, she needed that day. And also, we have a tree now in our high school near the corner of, where Student Services is at the corner. They're going to be putting leaves up that we also did during that week that said, I say something because, and they filled in the blank of what they think that meant. So we're going to have a tree with something like that that's going to be next school. We also had the pop scouter recently. I didn't personally attend. If I had my other student liaisons, they would know. And we also had a couple of students go to E C M A's. So it's all kind in the, for, it's like a course thing. And they, we don't know how they did yet since they just competed on Friday and Saturday. So we had a good five or six of them go and compete. So we're going to see how they do there. Not much happened in the past two weeks. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
I didn't, but I did pass on to the other board members that there is a upcoming conference Zoom meeting with, I'm trying to check who it is, Senator Gallivan and that we could join if we wanted to. So let me know because I need to let them know by Wednesday if who wants to go and will be on the meeting with us.
I'll do.
Okay.
Is there a topic on it or?
C D A.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted. Well, that's okay. That's what I thought it was on the report.
And I think William Conover, I thought it was on one of the, he's going to be on it as well.
Could we be in? Anything else? Anywhere else I can add to it?
Yeah. Have to get, have to chest thanks. But serious, you know, you have to hear the other side. On the thirteenth, I want, first of all, I want to thank you and the rest of your liaisons that come to the Duca meetings. It's really important that you guys see what's going on within, within our community. And that we had the U C R S, was it? U C R S come in and show us for first aid and that. That was excellent. On the thirteenth, we're going to have our next Duca meeting. And we're going to have Kim Burst, who is the Chikwaga clerk, is going to come and speak and tell what her duties are. So you want to thank again for the use of the primary school and for you guys, all your support you give us. And again, we got to, you got to get the community involved with this district so that they know what's actually going on in here, okay? Again, you're only, you're a little house here, but there's a whole mess of people out there that don't know. And they don't know what's going on. They try to tell them, I don't know, gee, I don't care. Oh, look at my taxes. And this is the type of people. They should see what's going on. And the one thing that I love in the primary school is we did the parades within the neighborhood, okay? And for you, some of you guys who are there, you saw some of these older people come out and they had tears in their eyes. Seeing the little kids.
Parade through the neighborhoods too, for homecoming.
Yes. It is so important that they see the kids. They got to see what they're, what they're paying for, what they're, you know, what they're supporting. And they see the kids. And they see the kids in the primary school through that neighborhood. It was, it was beautiful. Like I said, they're, they're crying. So you're doing a good job. But like I said, Doc, maybe we could talk something.
Thank you, Reverend. Just to note that there's, oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
I just wanted to thank everybody. We had the meat refill on Saturday night. A bunch of you came and helped and we want to thank you. Apparently there's a competition. I'll have to look up the number of who brought in the most money, but I have a feeling it might have been everyone and actually. The money guy.
Would you, would you tell Ralph?
I told it. It's all the time I'm walking around.
He could have counted all the proceeds in about.
That's true. He was a big help that counted. But we raised over thirteen thousand dollars. Oh, wow. As profit, straight hard out of it. So thank you. We do have the color run coming up, May fifth. And we need some serious participation because we have a little competition going on between the B T Os of who can get more, more volunteers and more attendees from each school. We have a little thing going on. So we're really pushing for high school because we know the little kids will come, but we're hoping to see schoolers come on, yeah, coming up. It's not hard to make that.
It's too much color.
Mary, just thank you for doing the meet.
Yes, thank you. It was wonderful.
Is that something, you think it's going to replace like the basket option?
I think so because it's brought in, brought in way more money with way less work. So.
Oh, I remember those days.
Yeah, the days of the basket wrap, that just took weeks.
Oh, I know. The white thought of you. I remember.
This wasn't much, but yeah.
Thank you very much. I heard you did a great job. I wasn't able to. I had a grandchild that I was helping with.
And the Pegasus showed up, didn't it?
Pegasus. The Pegasus showed up and ran around, yeah.
Ran around.
Yeah, he ran around, took a picture with people.
I like hearing the, the kids guess who's in the Pegasus.
Yes.
I like hearing what teachers, they're like, oh, it's this teacher, it's this teacher. I like hearing that.
That's funny.
Yeah.
Might have been Reverend Rick. We don't know. I don't know.
And just to remind everyone, there is a seat open this year for the board. So got your petition forms. Did I pick anything up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Cool.
That's awesome. Anything else? I did not pick up the form. I'm sorry. This is my last year. Yes, I did not pick up the form. Can I have a motion to go into an executive session?
Motion.
Collective for collective negotiations. I'm sorry.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
All right.